I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a court of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 501. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. This was made by Robert. This is seconded by Scott. All four. Seven oh. At this time, Robert's going to lead us in prayer.
Lord, we want to thank you for all the blessings you give us on a daily basis. But Lord, right now, we just need to break in this weather here. There are a lot of farmers and ranchers who contribute a little part to this community and the livelihood that they have in your hurting. And we just need some rain and some cooler weather to come in and help these farmers and ranchers out and all the community also. Lord, summer's throwing their clothes now, and a couple of teachers and students will be back on session by the time we have another board meeting. So we ask that they rest up and supply energy and get energy so that when they come back to school, that we'll have a great start to the year. And we also want to be with the staff administration, all of the involved at the school as we get started again in the very near future. Lord, be with us now as we transact business. We do things that we, for the benefit of these students and the community. So as we, what we do, we may glorify your name and everything that we do. Thank you, as you said, it's holy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one nation.
So I open for what's left, so it's time to enter into our budget workshop. We all should have a hand down.
Okay. What we're going to do is go through this current budget first and just kind of get an overview of where we are, and then we'll start looking at the 23 budget that we'll be adopting later on. Keep in mind, especially with 23 budget, that this is very preliminary. We don't have our certified values yet, and we don't have all of our staffing replaced. So there's still a lot of new parts, and still we're just going to kind of hit the highlights and see kind of what it looks like at this point. Our current budget, some of the things I wanted to point out was, we all remember that we had the issue with our local values not being certified by the state comptroller's office, and so that's a bit of our budget. We had that audited and was not able to find any savings on that. The appraisal district is working very hard to correct that. They have told us that it's not something to be corrected in one year just because of the gap, the size of the gap. You're capped at a certain percentage which you can increase, so it's going to take a couple of years to get us back on track. But they're aware and they're encouraged that we're making progress on that. So when we start looking at the 23 budget, we are assuming that we will not get local values again, so that's an assumption. But we also, this year, we had an increase of about $400,000 of indirect costs that we took on our federal funds. We did that in a board meeting and appropriated it for some of our city's equipment back earlier in the year. We talked about that. We also had some additional revenue for the fees that are associated with the 313 agreements that we did. So that was actually around $25,000 that we got in for that. If you'll remember, we had about $700,000 in staff salaries and benefits that we shifted over to SFR3 funds. So that, in our current budget, that we're operating SFR3 is giving up a dime a salary. So when SFR3 goes away, it doesn't shift back. This is something new. It happened a couple of weeks ago. The state has us listed to receive about $625,000. Good thing, Rob. And it's called maintenance of effort and equity for federal money related to COVID-19 pandemic. Now, when I saw that come up on our summary of finances, my first thought was, because it's for high need and high poverty schools, I'm not sure that's accurate, maybe they got us, you know, in a wrong list. But we do not think that's high poverty, but we do think that high need. But the problem with this money is, we can't really count on it until it's all said and done because there's a finite amount of money. There's a list of schools going from the highest need and highest poverty down. So wherever in, we don't see the list. So wherever we fall in that list, when the money runs out, you know, we may or may not be on the list. My assumption, based on our makeup of our schools, we're not supposed to be top. And so it really depends on the average daily attendance for a lot of the schools that are on top, and if they eat up, you know, whatever the money's left. So for now, this is what they're estimating, and this estimate happens every few. So sometime in the next few weeks, we should have, they should get all the ADA and everything. And, you know, we could get that much, we could get a little more, we could get a lot less, but we could get nothing. Okay?
It's good for planning purposes now.
I know, and I love it. I love it when you're so vague. I do know that several schools that I stay in contact with and we compare notes on, none of them will get it. And there's a couple of them that I was really surprised, you know, because of the makeup. Anyway, we'll see, we might get it in my mind. Any questions on that? I put a chart in here about our tax rate history, just to remind you, for y'all on that, if you remember, House Bill 3, put the impression in. So last year, our M&amp;O rate was 0.8968, and our INS was 0.208. The next one shows our collection rate. We're really good collection here and certainly have actually increased our collection rate since I've been here. I'm not going to do that, people just tell your taxes, I don't go out and pop on the door. But that's a good thing because when you can count on, you know, collecting, then you can predict what your collections are going to be when you have really good collection rates. If they're all over the map, then it's really hard to pin them down. So that's a good positive thing that we like to point out every year. The next one's on fund balance, just tracking of our fund balance. Now, this is what we ended last year with. That number will either go up or down, depending on how we end up here. And so on that note, my prediction at this point is really to pin on that $625,000. I'm thinking we'll be $300,000, maybe $400,000 either side before we get that on. So, you know, I think if you get none of it, then we'll probably end in the red, a couple hundred thousand dollars. I think if we get it, especially if we can pull 6.5, we could end in the white by about $400,000. Now, keep in mind, when I say we'll end in the red, we amended the budget in September for 138,000, I don't know, having kind of $138,000, something like that, I'm trying to get those mixed up, but anyway, $100,000 something thousand to come out of fund balance. So going into the budget, we knew if we followed everything to the penny, we would be in the hole that much when we get into that budget. But that budget amendment was for the prior year extension, that when the year ended, we had P.O.s that kind of were in the middle of problems we were having. We could work something, six months later, he's dropped the document. And so what we did was, we took the excess, because since we didn't spend it in that year, we put it in the pile, and then we amended it to this budget so that we're in those items, penny, and we could pay for it. So that's really not a bit of our budget, but it has to look that way. So we added, see, we added last year, and so we took some of that to cover the previous year's expenses that were going to actually be incurred in the year. So I think if we end to their value in the red, it's still, it's still kind of, it's still kind of a balanced budget. And at this point, that's, that's, you know, trending, but we also still have two of us that are down there that we don't have, so who knows? We're starting with them.
Well, there's a bus or two.
Yeah, we've got computers that are ordered.
This budget here, we're going to.
The computers came in today.
All of them? A lot of them, right?
A lot of them, yeah.
The buses are supposedly in, I think, takes a kind of waiting to be finished and judged as per.
Wirings.
I think that was one thing that rolled over last year.
One bus, yeah, we had a little bus.
That bus ended up picking, that bus ended up having an accident or something.
Got red. And then I've got a slide in here about the taxable values, because we talked a lot about taxes, just so you can kind of see. Where we are in the taxable values. Want to talk down a little bit about the whole harmless and our student attendance. The state, I can't in July of 2019, totally get the next March, so right in the middle of my first year. I have not had a year here where we did not get help funds or something. So the state is profiting us of, you know, they're saying, because of COVID, everybody aren't able to come to school, we're going to, you know, give you a break on your ADA, we're going to, you know, we're going to look back two years and pay you for what you had that year. Well, this year, they did another whole harmless. It was structured differently than the last two. The last two were really good for us because we had had larger ADA, larger student population, actually, so certainly a larger ADA. This one was only based on your student attendance rate. It didn't matter how many kids you had, but if you had 96% attendance in every year in the first four weeks, and you only had 93% attendance in the first four, six weeks of this year, they were going to substitute that 96% bottom number of students that you had. So we were held harmless, which helped us. It added about 24 ADA, and that's about $160,000, which is another thing that's going to help our, help our. I've got a slide in there, I've got the attendance rate. The attendance rate for Mount Vernon has been decreasing. It's really been decreasing for seven years, but there was one year that it was slightly 10 hundreds of percent or something, a little, a little bit higher. And this year was our lowest in the seven years that I looked back. Had we, had our student attendance rate increased by even 2% this year, it would have been about 200,000. So those are, those are just some things that are helpful to know because every bit that's played in is how you should definitely. Any questions on that? The, the next page is your, is our fall enrollment. You see, we went up this year. We're still not back where we were, but definitely a nice increase there. And then the blue one is the one that shows the rate all the way back to the 2015 season. So if we get in 95, 0.73. And really, 96 is, is what you strive for. I mean, obviously, you'd like to be better than that, but you know you're always going to have illness, you're going to have foot strength, you're going to have, you know, something like that, even, you know, in a normal setting. But, you know, you typically strive to get that 96%, which we haven't done since 2015 season. And what happens with that is, you know, the lower your percent attendance, then the lower your ADA. And that's what we're paying on, paying on ADA. Any questions on the current?
It's, you know, this doesn't really pertain, I guess, because it doesn't pertain, but I, I wonder what other school districts are on their attendance rate, and if we're, we're downside this year. If we start picking up, I wonder whether we compare, if it's, if other districts are the same.
I can start to find that out.
And see, and see if there's something that we're doing that we could be doing, or if everybody is living in the trend here, you know, next, keeps falling, next year we're going to be, I don't know why. I'm pretty sure sitting on some, I'm glad you're going to be far right here, you're like, you know, it's where.
Right. And, and, you know, we, we talk a lot about enrollment. Y'all get enrollment figures every single month, and we track them every single day. Dr. McCall probably looks at it every day. What's our enrollment track, what do we best track? And, and obviously, that matters. If they don't come to school, it really doesn't matter, if you've gotten on the roll. And because we're not paid that we've gotten on the roll, we paid it, you know, we were paid based on whether or not they come to school. So that's why I'm, you know, following the attendance trends and percentages and, you know, staying on top of absenteeism. Whatever the answer is, find out why we're absent, try to, try to work through that. And, you know, I don't, you know, we go into a whole lesson about absenteeism, but, you know, a student that's absent on a school trip, I think, whether it's a pay, a conference, or, you know, some sort of competition, those are not, I mean, these are just true absentee.
Reports that, and so when they release taper, if you want to compare, set up where we ended versus other districts comparatively, add that to what you're.
Okay, that'd be too hard to track. I think it'd be good to know where we are compared to our region.
So that would show where all the schools ended, so that it's something that's reported in that summer police submission that does release tapers, like what any district, 85%. It's all added.
That'd be good. Sure, they were not.
Tracks a little bit in regards to teacher.
Do you think those, having some of the, like, when the Omicron wave and we had to quarantine, like, that contributes at all to this? I mean, because there's been a study to find, do you think it looks like further due because of that? Or would you say?
Answer question, yeah, I'm not sure.
Did you, did we have quarantine this year?
We weren't required at quarantine. It was, parents that quarantined was off, was.
I thought there was, like, at the January, where we, we closed.
We closed for a couple of days.
We closed because we had a, just coming in ahead of it, districts around us were having, kind of getting hit at that time, and so because we had that holiday and we had been in state, we decided to just kind of go ahead and close those two extra days to avoid us getting hit if possible. So any cases that we didn't have, hopefully.
I thought there was a period where if you had someone in the family, we did make them quarantine for a period.
There was, but it was a short time.
It was a short.
Yeah, it was a very short time, but we changed it because of the T.A. and their guidance.
Okay. What, what did you say the 2021 whole harmless rate was based on? Our, our whole harmless cap is based on what?
It was based on the previous year's, not previous year.
1819.
1819 percentage, attendance percentage.
Okay, because they did, T.A. just had to report it in every district.
I'm good.
Attendance percentage, based on 2018.
They had, they had a report that showed us what they were going to substitute again and happen to do.
Yeah, so then we can see it.
I have 1819, I have 1920, and I just hope I have 2020.
When they, when they released their guidance on how they were going to hold harness, they released a list of all the schools and the number that would be substituted again. So we could run our own reports and see if we were going to be below that and if it was going to happen. If we'd been above it, if, you know, we got our, our actual attendance rate. But they only did it for four, six weeks, first of all. I think, I don't, I don't exactly know what kind of, corresponding you got about it, but in our needs and stuff, the thought was, they feel like, like, this six weeks, nobody should be missing this tour as public, so that would kind of give them just that, you know, that's not the right, the whole harness. More questions on that? Okay. Next year. As I've stated before, we assume we will not get local values again, and we have, we are using that assumption in our, in our projections of what our revenue is going to be. At this point, we don't have our certified values, so we're going on preliminary values. What I did was, I took the percentage of difference between last year's certified values and the actual state values that they, that they certified, because they didn't certify the local ones. The percentage between those, I'm going to apply them to whatever the current certified values are, and assume that it'll be a similar cap. Hopkins County property values, on the other hand, which historically have been a drop in the bucket, and they still are relatively a drop in the bucket, increased by 691%. So some property, it's called Stampede Solar, that the chief of praiser told me had gone off of ag value, and when it does that, it converts to current market value, not the market value back when you went on the ag exemption. And so we went from, I think, $500,000 in value last year to 4.7% this year. So anyway, that's nice, that was helpful. Plug that in, and with a little bit of tax money there, and the additional state money that it generated, kind of turned it around about 150,000, so that's good.
Is that a 10-year deal, right, with the seller?
I mean, it's on, it's on a market value plan, I won't continue to increase.
I think on the front that they, that they was sort of reading, we're looking at, I think it begins to depreciate, starts a little bit after year one.
It goes on in current value, the way she, the way she explained it to me, it's not very good for property.
We're going to share it, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
For each of us.
Assuming it will depreciate because of the use of it.
So that was part of the conversation when Black Powell and Shelly were here with us and Nate, or it was meetings with Nate, there was a side conversation or a shared with all, I can't remember, but anyway, he was mentioning this project with the neighboring school district, and, and he was saying they did not approach us with a 313 because to them, it was a small portion of the total project, when they were just willing to pay the full property tax value instead of approaching us with a 313, or they would have played. So received a benefit from it.
So when we see it this, this year?
Continue to see it.
Yeah, we'll continue to see it.
But enough to this amount, okay.
But it'll be kind of close, right?
Well, I mean, it'll depreciate, but, you know, it'll depreciate a lot every year, but we look at it every year, over 10 years. And, you know, the thing about this property is, it's such a small percentage of our overall property value that it doesn't add personally to things as far as the state numbers. So any of the tax money on this is very beneficial because there's really no downside. You know, when you're looking at, you know, 1.6 billion in actual value, or millions, not, you know, it's not really a big deal, and it's not going to sway it one way or the other, on us being headlines by the state. Questions? I put a chart in there for you to show in this current year's preliminary, and how the values have started to rise a lot more sharply than they had in the past, and that I estimated what property value study wound up showing, and that's the orange line, and I estimated it based on that percentage I was telling you about before. Now, on the 23 budget, it includes, we've added seven additional staff members. We're listed there, it was sit by position, not by person, and a reason for adding them. And I got these verified with our H.R., make sure I ran them all right. Those are included in this budget currently. The next slide, just really, just wanted to point out, because we kind of, we had conversations last year, and we always kind of need to keep this at the forefront because there's a certain phenomenon in school finance, it's not, it hasn't just been finance, but it's been going on as long as I've been in business, it's called circling the drain, and there are certain things that you watch for to make sure a school is not getting in a financial line. And one of the major things is your staffing ratio as compared, you know, your student or teacher numbers compared to your, your student number compared to your teacher or staff. And there's even reports in our system that, I can't exactly refer to the way it's worded, but it's like, it's kind of a scary name, you know, like, you're in a financial exigent fee position, you know, and all it does is compare your student numbers to your staff numbers, because if you get in a situation where you're going upside down, your student numbers are dropping, and your staff numbers either stay the same or rise, then you get into a situation where all, your, your money comes from kids. Yes, it's tax money, but you get to a point, and we don't know, that you're collecting so much tax and you have so few kids, and state says, well, you got to send us some because we have to send it over to this other school, who's in a different situation. So, you know, you, you get a finite amount of money for your students, and your salaries continue to rise, and that's when you get into a situation where you can't maintain what you're doing. So we always want to watch these numbers, just kind of make sure we don't have any steep lines on these. We actually, this year, moved our student, teacher and student staff numbers up, which it means that our staff numbers either stayed the same and our, and our enrollment went up, or our, our enrollment, you know, could have changed, could have gone down, but then our staff numbers remain now just a little more to, to kind of keep that, you want to keep that headed and going up. Now, obviously, you don't want it to get up to a point that you've got huge classes and, and then your academics start suffering. and then your academics start suffering, you know, like that. It is about, you've got, you've got time to watch it, but, um, salary and payroll, just in its nature, is going to always run, you know, it's just, it's just a fella. And so, um, you've, you've got to manage, you know, as long as your, your student population is staying pretty steady, there are ways you can, you know, kind of manage salaries and everything. But when you start to really have big drops in your student population, you have, you have to start kind of look at that. Like, just always want to keep this in the forefront so that you understand, um...
Does it, does it give you like an ideal ratio?
The state with recommendations, uh, it's very, I told you.
Yeah, what's, what, for Mount Vernon, for the state, I mean, what would our ratio?
Uh, I think, I think, what I've been told historically is we like to stay thirteen-ish, um, thirteen, well, you see there for like three years, we've been thirteen oh nine, thirteen thirteen seventeen, you know, those numbers. What you don't want to do is get, you know, below twelve. I have been in situations where, when I presented these numbers, our student teacher ratio, your student staff ratio is always going to be pretty much single digits, right? But your teacher ratio, you know, the state recommends fifteen, seventeen, depending on your student population you can make that, uh, if you can afford it, you know, thirteen is a really good place to be. You can keep, you know, decent sized classes and all that. I had to present one one time that our student teacher ratio was seven to one. And, you know, had a hard time convincing them that we needed to cut some positions or we needed to absorb as people retired and, and, and this went on for about four years. It was, it was under ten for about four years. It's not a position to begin because of that.
That's just because their student population was going down?
It's going down, it's going down. Yeah, and, you know, it was going down every single year, which, you know, we had it up to. So, I'm very encouraged that we're either going to continue to grow or at least level off. If you can level off, it's very, it's so much easier to do. But we were losing, uh, every year for about fourteen years and it was very noticeable loss. It was not just ten kids, it was, you know, uh, we wound up having to rid up. We had to go through a rid up and, uh, just like said, we need to people. You know, but, so that's why, because I've been through it, I'm, you know, always want to keep these numbers in front of you. Don't everyone let you get in a situation, this is really hard in the community, it's, I know everybody gets, you just don't have people that have to do that. So, we should keep these in mind, um, watch our trillions and be careful that we don't ever let it get so bad. It's, uh, it's very hard to fix, you know.
But, I mean, looking at these numbers, so, I don't think we have any classes that have thirteen and twelve students in them, right? So, I'm guessing like interventionist or call teachers or, as different things. So, you know, this number seventeen, or whatever the state recommends seventeen or fifteen, that's pretty, that's a lot of kids in the class because, you know, we're not at the school, I'm bothered, I know weird things. There are not many classes that probably have less than twenty kids, even if you're upper grade. Sometimes gotta have a lot of others, so, you know, maybe look at these numbers from deceptive, you know, I think it's not pretty great here, you know, we're at twelve to, you know, twelve to one, twelve point nine, four to one, but...
Yeah, but they need to factor in is, um, this, you know, this includes every teacher. Doesn't matter if they're, uh, if they don't have a classroom in their own, that, you know, maybe they're, like you said, interventionist. If there may be classes where you have multiple teachers in the class, uh, it's not seen teachers. Yeah, you have, you have these different levels. Exactly, and, and so that would skew your numbers. Like schools that, that stay around that fifteen, um, it, it might be that they're keeping fairly low. Class sizes at the elementary, but they've chosen to go a little higher at secondary level. It may be that where we might have, um, you know, a situation where we've got three teachers teaching a, a group of kids, they may say, you know, we can't afford to do that, so we're going to take that to two teachers. And I'm thinking, Pete, we need to, you know, there's some different things where you might have multiple teachers in classroom. And, you know, there's just different things, but you, that's when it's really hard to explain the ratio because if they're a teacher, they're listed as part of this. And I think that's why when I see, uh, twelve and thirteen range, I'm comfortable with that. But when you start getting lower than that, then you're, you've really got some pretty small classes somewhere. But if you know you've always got those people who are not, you've got their little nest, you know, they're, they're a little wonder if, you know, and you factor all the rest of those in, you're still, you know, ten to one and, uh, not wanting to start with secondary or something. More questions on the staff? Um, just so you're aware, the, um, all the salaries, uh, that I worked into this preliminary look at the budget are based on the proposed compensation plan that's in the package. And for this next year, uh, we have built in that ESSER will sit plant three hundred fifty thousand dollars roughly of salaries, uh, along with summer school and tutorial costs that will eventually, which next year, uh, on twenty twenty-four, will come back into the regular budget. That may seem like a substitute for some, some, um, so we all want to keep that in the back of our mind because we're going to have to absorb that back in as we're, we're going away. And then I, I just gave you a copy, uh, the three budgets, uh, these are, can't say enough, very complimentary. Um, and it's in a format that you're used to seeing that we're going to report, you know, like we do for the board meetings. Uh, it'd be very, very similar. Yes. It will go through twenty more versions as we iron out all the details. Don't have a lot of extras built in so far, um, we, you know, I had built in extra for fuel for electricity and gas and all those things, you know, um, some repairs, you know, a, a lot of things that we're, uh, that we've pinned on are definitely going to, insurance going up. A lot of those bases, I had to build in, uh, an extra amount to cover. But, or as far as supplies and travel and that kind of stuff, um, with a few exceptions, it's pretty much what it was like to just, you know, try to keep things down. As we go through to try to riddle down this bottom line, that's not a pretty number. You know, we may wind up having to, we're seeing it out of, you know, travel budgets or, you know, out of, um, supply budgets or something like that to try to, to get closer to the number. You know, we may have conversations and sit downs where we look at, you know, specific items or programs or whatever happened to do this, uh, in a more efficient way, you know, less costly. Technology director and I had a couple of conversations today about some lease agreements and how we might be able to rework those and get some savings and, uh, so we're, you know, we're, we got to get leads at some point to try to get, um, to a number that we're, uh, we're looking at. Salaries will adjust as we get the final people hired. Uh, we have placeholders at this point where we're, you know, basically guessing, yeah, guessing at salaries. So, some of those will go up, some of them will go down and we'll get all that worked out. Any questions?
So, these ESSER funds, so these three hundred fifty thousand salaries. So, we, we won't get that from twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And our attendance is going, it's going down one percent a year, so that's about a hundred twenty-five thousand. So, basically for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we're, we're going to issue a four hundred seventy-five thousand dollar, whoever gets started.
Exactly, yeah. Turn it, turn it, if it's right around, would, would do wonders, especially when we get another bump in our enrollment.
What we're looking at.
Yeah.
If we approve the salaries tonight, that's where, period, month of twenty-two, twenty-three, year. Correct, yeah.
Yeah, even the bump in our enrollment that we got this year that we were so excited about, you know, had it at ninety-three percent to try to kind of get that. Luckily, we have harmless, so that's nice, but we, we can't afford to keep going down that road, you know.
Not keepers in salaries.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yes.
With ESSER money, yeah, it won't get extra.
And ESSER technically could go in this way before, but I'm not sure we'll have, I mean, any left, you know. Some schools, we used it on first year, you know, we chose our budget at that one or two, but if there's, even if there's fifteen thousand dollars left, we didn't budget it. We still had a third year if we could, we're just not planning for that.
We wrote the grant for two years, or to pre-award, pre-award, um, plus this year, I'm going to tell you to be a three-year. So, I figure that probably would have allocated in front of us.
We're going to cover all the numbers for this year already because it's supposed to be pre-enrolling, but I guess it's way too early, but nobody, I don't think we're going to roll back yet.
We really didn't really, true enrollment will really don't, we're really going to about section one. Yeah, we have preliminary first week of school, but that, that shields so much from kids who don't show up in enrollment where else, you know, getting number, some additional kids will come in, pardon them, to about section one. We have our regular August meeting, it's August the eighth, uh, you know, we usually, or we have to have another meeting. We're looking tentatively, just, we're going to be thinking about, we'll, we'll nail that down for sure at the August meeting. But tentatively doing the adopting tax rate budget, uh, August thirtieth, Tuesday? Last Tuesday? And so, if you look at your calendar of that, if we need to adjust it, um, to possibly the twenty-nine or the thirty-first, either one, just one of those, one of those three days if we can. So, just, if you're not settled on that, it's not, I just want to put that on your radar to kind of look at, we'll, we'll nail that down. Because we'll have to publish that, and when it's going to be, when we publish it, we talk to the paper. We want to try to get that in the August the eleventh edition, we still have to use the Williams World Paper. Obviously, we go to the outline paper, not get reestablished for a third again. So, that's still our official publishing paper.
We'll have to, on the eighth board meeting, we'll have to have you, um, propose the tax rate, you know, set the date for the, the hearing, which will be the third, the Sunday. And then, um, once you propose that tax rate, we have to bump it in the paper. And there's a, um, ten day or thirty day window from the date you're going to adopt, which you can count back. You can't do it less, you can't run any paper less than ten days before you, uh, adopt and you can't do it more than thirty days. And, and that has to be voted on, the, you know, make a motion or thing to propose actually. And, um, so, at this point, the plan is to do that at the regular meeting on the eighth, so you don't have to come up here another time in that same basic window. And we asked the newspaper if we could, because they had it cut off at noon on that day. We asked them if they could hold it open until after the meeting and that's it. The notice of get it in that week's paper. If, if we fail to get it in that paper, we can still get it in the next week's paper and be at eleven minutes. It would still be within the law, but it doesn't give us any wiggle room in case they might mistake the paper. And I always like to do it the week before just in case it's a missed grant or something that I can have it run again and, and, you know, leave the, leave the law. So, that's the, the plan at this point. And speaking of, um, tax rates, um, under the C M C R, uh, that came about two years ago, our tax rate will go down again this year because our, our values are going up. And so, uh, it's looking like it'll be eighty-five, eighty-five point four-six is what my team looks predicting. It could be a bit less, uh, if you're not, because I'm running it off of preliminary values. And, you know, I think the final values will, will be significantly small enough to, to change that. So, um, this was all projected on eighty-five, I think that's eighty-five point four-six. Same thing with, uh, I N S, it'll go down a little bit because, uh, you know, you just have to collect enough to meet your payment and the values still are reflecting yours, so the rate goes down a bit. So, that's your collecting habit, move on. Is that it?
Okay, more questions, ma'am?
I have a board consent agenda, any questions on that? You have this, uh, the budget amendment? Believe it or not, where's that fuel box card? Put something around, do you, is there a hat?
Yes, yes, we had, um, uh, we did all have to have a maintenance agreement on our H C this year and so that saved us some money and it is, uh, buses that are needing to have some repairs done and our fuel costs to, you know, out, outdone what we've had in the fall. So, it's, it's two different functions, but the bus repairs and the fuel costs are all in the same function. And it's coming from maintenance, so it's just, it's just...
And I'm pretty sure, I think our fuel, um, I think we have a, it's a ten cent of the cost, I think is what our, we don't have like, you know, we don't get fuel over three fifty a gallon, you know, so like to do that some oil, I think we have five, ten, seven of the cost.
Yeah, top plus. Thank you, Sean.
Yeah. Yeah, it would have been.
We'll have the U B A to the August board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, the motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, for the, like, Robert?
Second by Linda, all four. Seven oh, thanks. Action items considered approved, TASB legal policy update one nineteen, making the following local policies. And a minute after we, uh, just explained the agenda, you got all legal?
Absolutely. Uh, so this is a one-month update where TASB is setting in either legislative session policy recommendations based on public comment to mine and now that they've gone through legal, what I call legalese, by making sure that the wording is correct. So, we're setting those in, so those were just adopted for you as all other boards are doing. I do want to draw your attention to one that will be brand new. This, this will be very interesting to watch how this shakes out because in the regular session, they are now requiring Texas Education Agency under D M A Local, which is professional development required staff development. We have always had required staff development, uh, that has been in local policy and that has been up to school districts to make and advantage our certifications and documentation on that, which we do in-house. Now, T V A will be required to have a clearing house, um, that will go through our T E L accounts that will actually be setting in for school districts to then view specific required clients because what they're realizing is... because what they're realizing is school districts are interpreting that differently across the state, and I'm shocked by that. So we're lead form packages every year, annual requirement, no matter who you are. So there are certain ones that we know for sure. Uh, and then there are some that say all new employees have to have this training, and then as recommended, uh, which could be every two years, every three years, you can see that it can get a little bit vague on when we train. Now, we have to go through the clearinghouse process, go in, look at the portal and see what's required. And I will be presenting an annual professional development plan to you as a school board, which you will be required to adopt. That will show all of our compliance training through what we have in the district. Uh, so that would just be something new that you will be saying setting in annually, once they get this up. So again, we already do this now, we just haven't brought it to you for adoption in the past. All the other ones are basic wording changes.
Any other questions on the local policy updates? I'm, I'm just so confused, and it's kind of hard to have a question for me. I took something that was confusing and went ahead and said, you know what, let's just make it where I really can't understand. Because some of this stuff in here, this BBG legal and BBI, this, this has to do with us.
That's your board stuff, yes, correct.
What happens if we don't, if we don't do this?
You're right, and that happens, I, that's an excellent question.
You're fired, and you have to give your paycheck back.
Well, and if it's every district getting back, it will bump that budget up there 0.0%.
Now, I've had some districts forget to do local policy updates, and then we find out later, and that's a big mess, but I never had one up front, just. Stick it to the man real quick.
So do you have a specific question regarding one of the policies?
No, not really.
I am, if there are qualifications, I can, if there is one.
Yeah.
If you want some verification on.
We've got it wrote out here, it's hard to understand, it's kind of hard, you know, you just don't want to do anything, put yourself a board member in any, any more jeopardy than what, you know, you're already kind of bound to some stuff, and then, you know, are they really trying to suck you in a little bit more? Y'all see what I'm talking about there, on page one? And if we want more information on this, uh, we can, this is an action item. We can postpone this item and get more information on it. We think there's something in here, I didn't do enough research on this beforehand, so.
And if there's a particular one, you want to see the actual wording, we didn't get the explanation right now, we're missing a whole kit and bundle in there. We're like, they don't need all that.
Yeah.
And then, now you're like, hey, what about, um, so, yes, I mean, we can, you know, because normally when I said in local, we should do it before and after. And so we can also send that out to you, and I could stack that to you now, because we did, um, just win, you are the winner. I'll have to be able to. You're left so much.
I think it would be, you know, but we've got that, we've got it out of here.
Those used to be called vantage points.
Yeah.
Uh, Kane and I were telling Jessica, they used to be called board member vantage points. And so they came on a yellow piece of paper, and we used to do hard copy on everything for our policy, and that's what was dispersed to the board, and then we got this stack of the actual legal details. Um, so again, they, we pulled out as a PDF now, so that's nothing much without that overview.
Yeah, I mean, this is the daddy. So, you know, they're supposed to be legit, they're supposed to be looking out for us, but, you know, we're gonna be the ones that don't want to bust something to go down. Uh, I don't think it's anything that we have to have right now, but if there's something we could, you know, if y'all, if y'all are comfortable, we did make a motion, we get second, we'll vote on it, that's all we gotta do. If not, we can, uh, I need a motion to postpone it, that means we would bring it to the next meeting. If you table it, you have to bring it up at this meeting, but if we postpone it, we can go to the next meeting, uh, or whatever, and give a little bit more information, maybe dig into it a little bit more. If we're comfortable doing that.
I have that, I have the annotated one up for this one, so yeah, I had, it's 170 pages.
Hey, what else can you do?
Can you pull up a specific one?
I have this one specific, that's what I'm saying, you can have a specific one you'd like to look at.
Is that what you're looking at? I think this question is regarding the compensation and expenses being.
Absolutely, so let me pull that specifically.
I can speak for you, is that what the one you're looking at?
No, this one up on the app.
Yes.
The BBI legal says board member technology resources and electronic communications revisions are to update citations and better reflect legal sources. So, you know, and I'm guessing if you pull that up, you know, it's for, where, you know, like, like it's a main year from.
Give me your, um, give me the number again, are the letters?
BBG, BBI.
BB? It's all five, okay. BBG legal. The wording. It's one word. BBG legal, they changed under travel services, an officer or employee of a school district, they struck out, they added or employee, and they removed school. That's the change on BBG legal.
So they, yeah.
Okay, so they added, they added under travel services, an officer or employee of a, and they did a strike through on school and a set district, who is engaged in official business, may participate in the contract for travel services. That is the only change made on that. Okay, BBI. BBI changed government code 522, looks like a typo that went to, or no, it's changed from 522 to 552.04. Um, and then that was also wording under online message board for the purposes of, and they announced as government code chapter 551, instead of of the Texas government code. So they distract through the word the Texas. And then down, again, the wording, and this is on online message board. If has been changed to in the event that, and then again, instead of saying the district, it says a board removes from the online message board, or similar letter imminent. So again, that's where legal order changes.
So not an actual policy change, it's just wording.
It's wording.
The local policy.
Well, the B D A A.
Okay.
Uh, B D A A legal, users, duties and requirements.
Okay, on this one. Okay, so they've changed it from sheriffs to trustees, taken out of the board. A president who shall, says must, be in the lead of the board. Um, other officers and committees, and they've struck, they've been distracted through here, so they've changed from managing to considers. Going down, so they cleaned up wording here, so this is wording change.
Okay.
Okay, so rather than ensure that, it says submit the annual financial report. So under, so they changed the wording on here, so strike through here, strike through here.
Okay. So what I'm getting to do this is they're, they're taking it from King James version to the new international.
Exactly.
Kind of. Right, that what I'm getting to me, didn't that, right? They're just taking some, some of this terminology, so it's not really changing anything. Down anymore? So, I mean, y'all, do you, do you need a motion to postpone it, or a motion to, uh, accept the, I don't know, deal here? Need a motion to accept it?
To approve.
To approve the offer of local policies, so I'll take either one of those at this time.
I'll make the motion to approve the changes.
And I have a second, second about Linda, any more discussion? So a motion made about Brooks, second about Linda. All four, uh, approved in TASB, local policy update 119, regarding the following local policies, C E C, DMA, E H A A, E H P, E H P A A, E H B V, E I F, F F B A, F F H. That is all. All four? Okay. Uh, for the record, truly, I am dyslexic, so if I did miss one of those right there, it is protocol, yes, yes, yeah. 1.0, that's a need to be 1.5. Item A, consider approval of 2022, 2023, BISD compensation plan.
And what you have before you in the workbook, uh, the 27 pages that you have, um, is our proposed 22, 23 compensation plan. I do want to notate, we did add a step to our teacher's salary scale, uh, and as you know, we go well beyond the state required step. Uh, so as we were looking at how many teachers were impacted at the step 28, and then they go to hold, uh, there were 11 people that are on here, step 29, or potentially step 30. And so in reviewing that, what we would like to do is add step 29 this year, and that, those 11 employees, and I say employees, those 11 teachers that are impacted will get that additional step, so they will not be frozen. And the next year, we'd like to move it to 30, and then we'll hold it at 30. Most are out by 30 years, but we felt that would be good for our teachers and for those districts that hold at 25 and hold at 28, that also could help us with some retention, or teachers that we showed that we are continuing that, even though it's a minor step, it's a step that shows we're not freezing it.
And that's, so if you hire a teacher that's retired, and you do the rehire, that's a totally different deal.
That's a different thing, yes, now retire, rehire, we hire in at wherever they retired at. So if we're at step 29, they, they retired at 30 years, they still start with us at 29, because that's our salary scale. But then we pay the additional 15% surcharge for a retired, rehired, plus their additional premium cost.
Okay. Well, this year, we have done two of those.
Yes, we do have two retired, rehireds on the books this year.
So that's 15%.
Yes, that is, so they're, they're topped out on their salary, plus we paid a TRS surcharge back that no longer be passed to a, to a teacher, which is later changed that, the district does have to incur that, and it's like 4.8, around 8 to 15.
Okay.
Um, in addition to their salary that we paid.
So it's cheaper to keep on that.
To TRS, sorry, yes, goes to TRS normally.
35 years, and it is to probably pay that retired rate.
Well, if they're retired, and you hire that person, you still gotta pay them surcharge, regardless of.
So we keep on doing our steps, and we keep somebody, you know, at 33, 34 years.
Retiring, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, you know, again, in the past, we, we tried not to hire retired, rehireds, but this year, this summer, in regard to hiring, it was, it was hard. I mean, it was the hardest shit we've had so far, um, but I also think that the two people that we, that we hired are, who want to see the benefit of them being at the classroom. They're way above them, or after, so we had to fill the spot.
So the, the 350,000 that we were talking about earlier, of the ESER funds, I mean, does that spread amongst all the salaries that we go up?
No, we, we pick specific people that we attach those ESER funds to. So in the past, we paid that as teachers, so I give him the number, I'm like, this is your top end number, so cover whichever salaries, and I call them frames, which is your benefits included, and so she'll pick out of that group, specific teachers that will attach those ESER funds to, to pay out. So it's not like a blanket across their distribution, budget code is actually ESER 3, for this year.
Well, it's based upon a number, not a, unless your question's based upon a salary number, not necessarily position.
So we did, with that dollar amount, then we'll just locate, okay, this is how much we have to work with. She'll pick these teachers that will code, recode, and we're, we're careful to not pick people who are teaching a course that is, is charged to a specific brand or a specific, uh, like seating money or sign that we pick, uh, someone who's not already attached to some other, usually poor, we usually try to pick poor subject teachers for that, they're clean, they're all, um, what we call a people level, which is instruction.
It doesn't affect the teacher at all, it's just a way of.
You say that ESER money.
Instead of using general fund money.
Yes. We're subplanting, it's the only federal fund source that you can actually subplant funds with the ESER, because normally, federal money is supplemental in addition to, so those would have to be in ready position, like our intervention is for supplemental positions. So our intervention isn't the only way to pay with our federal top line money, that does our supplement. So with ESER 3, it allows teachers to subplant in, which means what we did was to help our general fund money.
These weren't adding positions.
No. We're, exactly, we're subplanting that money. Exactly.
I think it's not necessarily.
It's not, in addition to.
And 350,000.
No, it's floating.
Asking earlier about that.
Oh, no, no, no.
Well, but after ESER is gone.
After it's gone, but that was in the budget recording, though.
Right, yes.
I mean, those positions.
Yes, correct. All of the other, all of the other salaries.
I think it's more sense.
The salary scales stay the same, we did increase the paraprofessional salary scale by $1 an hour, even though that's still not a lot. We have a lot of paraprofessionals, so anytime that seems very minor to move a dollar, but when we move, then it triples and affects a lot of people. Uh, so we did bump that, and that was the only one that we actually began on, I say that, our campus secretary, we moved it 12 cents. So again, just to change some numbers in that, but that was only a 12 cent change. You are kind of going through here.
The dean of students that we added, did they get a vice principal salary?
They, I have two positions for that, so a dean of students is a non-certified and certified. If they are a non-certified administrator, they're on a different pay structure than a certified assistant principal. So for dean of students, if it's a certified, they'll get one salary, if they're non-certified, they'll get 50% salary.
So when we hired a dean of students, it's never been a vice principal or anything, is that right?
Correct.
They would be on the. Dean of, they're working on their certification.
They're working on their certification, that would be zero years experience, so we would consider that a zero year. What I try to do on the administrator side is we count true administrative years, so most of your salaries, which gets a little rocky, because when you look at someone, for example, if you look at mine, I'm 20 years of service, but not all of that is administrative, because I'm a teacher. So we try to differentiate, when did your true administrative years start and compensate based on that, not your years.
It's not about dollars, it's not about to rank those reserves to football games.
On this type of.
I don't think we paid the first question. I think we paid the first question, I think we've got them now, yeah.
Uh, what I also added for you, I tried to keep this in, and I always say this one is a, is a moving target, but in previous districts, what I can see on the administrative scale is a minimum, a mid, and a maximum range. And the reason that you do that is again, your administratives are all over the place with your years of experience. So what I did was I looked at the positions that we currently have, I looked at market, and where those market positions are paying. So what you're seeing is we have what I call an internal salary scale, and that's really attached to the individual, so if you were to do an annual 2% increase, that's where that person would be if they were sitting on a scale. Uh, we don't use that. Uh, we don't use that for hiring, we just use that to keep us what I consider in market. So we don't do something crazy like Dr. McCullough does at St. Chandler, I want to hire this person for this much money, I'm going to go. Well, that's way out market, here's how our market's running. And so that kind of keeps us with a working market. So if you look at the minimum, the minimum ranges is a year zero. So that's someone coming in with no experience. I say year zero to one, if you wanted to, but our minimum starts at year zero. Midpoint can run you anywhere from eight to 10 years. Again, on internal scale, I try to hit the 10-year mark. Because again, I think this is an administrator, so you have to be a classroom teacher for three years before you can even be a principal. So I know they're going to have at least a minimum of three classroom years. Most of them are going to be longer in the classroom. So most people are getting in three to five years as a classroom teacher, so they're already on that scale being competitive with where they were coming from. So midpoint runs you eight to 10 years, again, 10-year was what I worked with. Maximum, again, because they've had some classroom experience, most of them are not going to be hitting that 25-year mark in that administrative role, but some may. So I tried to set the scale in with a maximum, hitting about 25 years of service. 30, depending on who the position was, if we already have people set in, so of course I would want to come back to you next year and change this again. If that makes sense. So again, it's a range to kind of keep us in what I call market for those positions. Then the extra duty and then our, um, sub, and our subpay is the same as we had in the B, in the shares. So we have not changed that and we're still paying. But I would consider average for our area. The one thing I think that keeps our subs coming back is that 10 or more days with us, they get in those higher subpays, which is very nice. So it gives them incentive to take some of the times, you know, work with us.
So we walked that fine line, trying to stay in the market, what we call hire people, trying to pay bills.
Yeah.
When we're looking at next year, if these ESR funds
Yeah.
are out, you know.
And we found that, of course, as you know, with us hiring assistant principals, of course, what we had, I liked the middle school assistant principal position as opposed to forever, I liked forever. And we found out, and I, I'd been like for a 3A that we have a pretty competitive scale. And I had some that weren't even coming in for interview, wouldn't even talk to us because of where they were coming in on the administrator side. So that's the hard thing is to get good quality administrators, even teachers, as you know, when we sit in a scale last year to try to be competitive with our market. And so trying to keep that competitive scale with larger districts between what you can compete with, but still keep with our market and quality administrators to not oversee those individuals, it's, it's a balance. And trying to keep your kids enrolled and present. And put a budget for the school.
Any more questions for Senator White?
I had a one thought from Ms. White.
Ms. Woodard?
Sir.
Thank you for stepping up this year, being the principal of vice principal of the councilor, it's been thanks. We all know what you did and we're grateful. I think I can speak for everybody on this floor. We don't sometimes get time to tell you that, but we're positive and I will tell you thank you. All of y'all, so, clever. Do I have a motion that we approve the 2022, 2023 compensation plan?
I think both.
Motion made by Scott Eaton. I second. All four? Seven oh. Obviously, consider approval of 2022, 2023 MBISD student code of conduct.
Okay, before you is the student code of conduct, which you are requiring immediately to approve. There are no changes to the student code of conduct because again, we're not in a legislative session right now. And so the template that we received from TASB is no change and therefore rolling for no change on ours.
This is the code of conduct of the handbook you're handling. There's other thing, when do we?
The board can approve the handbook, we'll, we'll get to you. The board approves the code of conduct. Um, it usually does not approve the student handbook.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure you argue with some of that stuff in there.
Okay. Any questions on this student code of conduct?
It's not as long as the handbook probably is.
About the same.
You have pretty close, or is it?
It's, I mean, it's on the handbook, especially in here because there's all the TASB policy.
Well, also on the handbook, this last year, we incorporated all three campuses together.
Yes, it's one handbook. Well, actually, we've done that since I've been here. Uh, because it's a lot easier for parents to look at one student handbook, and I say that as a mom of three young kids when I was in, lived down, than having to go through. So we got together and incorporated it into one, so that parents that have children at every campus or multiple campuses can just go and learn to search.
Any further questions? Okay. Any motion to approve the 2022, 2023 MBISD student code of conduct?
I'll make them.
Motion made by Brooks. Second about the end, all four? Seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, do you consider approval of region seven vendors, woodwind and brasswind for banned equipment as presented?
Uh, you had that before you, Ms. Parker's not here, but I'll go over that with you. He received three quotes from different vendors for some additional band instruments to replace some, um, instruments that needed to be replaced. And, um, recommendation before you is for the, um, quote from woodwind, brasswind, and the amount of 49, 554. You saw the instruments that it was going to replace. Five susa bones, six baritone, uh, one euphonium and three silver susa bone for hard cases. And you see, instruments are not cheap. So woodwind and brasswind was a low, low, low bid on how to prove it.
Where's the money? This year's?
It's on this year's. That's the, um, the indirect cost that we pulled to for buses and equipment. This is part of it because he, we knew that we had some things that were getting older and really torn up and could be fixed. Athletic stuff and stuff.
I think they got a letting agreement there.
I guess.
Just come in.
So where did that money for that like equipment come from?
That's indirect cost.
That indirect cost one that we got.
That we have.
That we appropriate. Was it early in February?
Um, yeah.
That's I hired her, she came in, so... Okay. So we don't have to have a dollar amount stoked on this deal.
With 49, 554. It's the dollar amount.
The budget in that one was done in December.
December, okay.
Any questions on that? So at this time, we need a motion to approve the region seven vendor, uh, woodwind and brasswind for banned equipment as presented.
Motion.
Motion made by Linda, second by Robert, all four? Seven oh. All right. At 6:36 PM. Board convenes into now during the executive session pursuant to the following sections of the exact 551, 70. It's 8:44. 8:44, the board convenes back into open session. And at this time, Dr. McCullough, do you have any, um?
Personnel report, yes. I'll present to you the, um, new personnel, uh, since the last board meeting. That's going to be Cindy Hassel, elementary teacher, Jamie Brown, pre-K teacher, Jamie Don, eighth grade LAR teacher, Lindsay Redford, seventh grade social studies teacher, Maria Raina, pre-K teacher, Marsha Rowminds, high school math teacher, Megan Glover, middle school secretary, Rich Star, Sharon Meyer, eighth grade math teacher, and Susan Alsbrook, fifth grade, um, LAR teacher. No resignations.
No resignations. Any further business? Okay. 8:45, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all very much.